Okay, we're on. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We have already called our meeting to order. We had a closed session that we went to earlier, so I'm going to ask that we could certify that session first, then we'll move on to our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we certify our closed session and that we only talked about what we made a motion to go in there and talk about.
All right. Motion made. Second, we certify our closed session. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you very much. If you folks will stand, we'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the day and for all the many blessings that you have extended to each one of us. We ask that you'd be present with us here tonight in these chambers as we deliberate the issues of our city. Just pray, Lord, that all the decisions that we make here tonight will be in the best interest of all those that we serve. And we certainly make our prayer in your son's name. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item on our agenda is our audience of visitors. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any topic at this time, we'd like to hear from you, but if it has to do with any of the four public hearings, we'll hear from you at that time, if that's okay. So is there anything other than the public hearings that anyone may have on their mind that they'd like to talk to us about? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the approval of our minutes. We have two sessions, a regular and a work session. If we could adopt, excuse me, have those individually, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of the city council meeting of February 8th, 2010, regular session.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made. Second, we adopt our regular session minutes from February 8th, 2010. Any concerns, comments regarding the minutes? Any corrections, additions? Okay, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Judy, in the work session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the work session.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made. Second, we adopt the work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. First, the next item on our agenda, item E, under public hearings, the first of the four, is a request to McDonald's Garden Market LLC for a conditional use permit. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this best is going to provide a summary of the conditional use permit request for you and the applicants here, and I'm sure they're folks in the audience that also would like to speak.
Go ahead.
Debbie?
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. If we could have the lights, please. Good evening, Mayor Helsel, members of the city council, and citizens of Pecosin. On behalf of the city's planning commission, staff is presenting to you this evening its recommendation on the conditional use permit request that has been submitted by McDonald's Garden Center, which currently is home-based in Hampton. McDonald's would like to basically set up a satellite retail establishment in the city of Pecosin on a temporary basis. It would sell basically plants and garden supply accessories and care products to include outdoor furnishings and decorations. They are proposing to operate only between the months of July, I mean, excuse me, of March and July. They would request to come back on an annual basis, and they would like to operate daily between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. They are not proposing any type of structural improvements on the property. They plan to share customer parking and bathroom facilities with Pecosin Shopping Center, which is an adjacent development. You may recall that last year, this same type of establishment, or McDonald's, was here on a temporary basis and basically operated between the months of April and July. At that time, when the staff reviewed their application, it was our impression that they were coming in on a one-time basis just to see if there was a market to possibly locate here on a permanent basis. Because garden centers are a use that's allowed by right in the B2 zoning district, staff moved forward and allowed McDonald's to come and to operate under that temporary scenario, given that they could use customer parking and other facilities with Pecosin Shopping Center. Subsequently, after their closure in July, we were reapproached by a representative of the McDonald's Corporation, which included Mr. Mark Anderson, and he suggested or approached us about possibly reopening again in the fall. At that time, we reevaluated the zoning ordinance and the uses that are allowed by right in the zoning ordinance, and even though garden supply centers are allowed by right, we decided that this was more of a temporary use, given that McDonald's did not want to build the necessary improvements that's normally required of other business establishments operating in the city. So with that, we are requiring that the applicants come forward this evening with a conditional use permit to allow for the temporary operation, again, not to include all of the necessary facilities that are required of other businesses that operate on a year-round basis. The site, as most of you are aware, is located directly behind the BB&amp;T bank building and fronts directly on Little Florida Road. It's commonly known as 7 and 9 Little Florida. It's a square-shaped parcel that is now vacant, but formerly housed two separate homes that were converted over a period of years into commercial establishment. Those commercial establishments, or those homes, basically house both commercial and professional office uses over a period of years. Probably about four or five years ago, those buildings were torn down and no other improvements were placed back on the site. The property is commercially zoned, as indicated before. It does share a B2 zoning category along with all the other properties that front directly on With Creek Road along the widened section of the street. In the B2 district, retail establishments are typically allowed by right. Only do we require a conditional use permit for those uses that generate high traffic volumes and/or are temporary in nature, such as this particular request. When you look at the surrounding uses, the property is bordered on the northwest and south by general retail establishments. However, it is bordered on the east by single-family residential. The property is located at the dividing line between the residential and commercial uses along With Creek Road. Excuse me, the planning commission reviewed this request at its January 21st meeting, and by a vote of four to three, they are recommending denial of this application. After holding a public hearing and receiving comments from several residents, or several citizens, who were opposed to the request primarily because of whether or not it was considered fair to allow McDonald's to come in and to operate on a temporary basis without installing the necessary improvements when other commercial establishments are held to a different standard. Therefore, the planning commission is recommending denial of the application as presented. In staff's review of the request, as always, we came up with a list of conditions that we felt that may be appropriate should either the planning commission and/or city council decide to move forward with the approval of this application. When we reviewed the conditions or considered the conditions, we tried to think about making this use as compatible as possible with the other business communities surrounding the property. With that said, I'll go through the list of conditions very quickly with you. One, we would suggest that you limit the hours, or limit the operation, to once a year between the months of March and July, and that instead of having an indefinite period of time for their return, to put a maximum time period of three years. Limit the features that could be allowed on the site, which are temporary in nature, to those that were included in the conditional use permit application. Based on the layout that you received in your agenda package, McDonald's Corporation would like to build or install four temporary structures on the site for shade for their plants as well as for their customers, I mean, as well as their employees. We would suggest that you limit them to those features that are shown on that plan. Can't read my own writing. Oh, limit the products sold to those that were listed in the application, and quite frankly, they are those that I mentioned earlier on in my discussions with you this evening. Basically, it's going to be plant and nursery-type items, which would include lawn and garden care products as well. We would suggest that you require removal of all the structural improvements that are actually placed on the property at the closure of the business each year. That you require that all signage to comply with the city's sign ordinance and with the Architectural Review Board regulations for this property. This property is located within an architectural control district, so therefore, they are regulated by the Architectural Review Board's guidelines and regulations. Require that all site features also comply with ARB requirements, which would basically limit their color and their design to those standards that are applicable to other developments along With Creek Road. Require perimeter fencing. That is one of the issues that staff, basically, or a condition that staff imposed on the proposal last year. We asked for the perimeter fencing with emphasis, with fencing along the southern boundary line of the site adjacent to Little Florida Road to avoid customers from entering the site off of Little Florida, to basically force your customer path to the site through the existing paved parking area in Pecosin Shopping Center. Require all signage to comply, oh, I'm sorry, to require or to prohibit storage or parking of commercial trailers. Last year, there was a commercial trailer on-site. They had also asked that they be allowed to do so this year. We are asking that you not include that, and the primary reason is because other commercial establishments are not allowed to use commercial trailers for storage in the operations of their business. Also, require off-site storage and/or display of merchandise. This is to avoid any conflicts with the existing parking spaces in Pecosin Shop, in the Pecosin Shopping Center, and to keep all of the actual use on the 7 and 9 Little Florida Road parcel. And finally, to require the establishment of crossseasements between the Pecosin Shopping Center and the actual McDonald's Garden Center to avoid any conflict should Pecosin Shopping Center sell the product, or sell the property during the time period that McDonald's is in operation, to make sure that they can continue to use Pecosin Shopping Center as their paved parking area. That basically concludes our presentation this evening. We have advertised this for public hearing in the necessary local papers, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Debbie, thank you very much. Well done. Any questions of Debbie? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, let's then open the public hearing, and we will ask that those who have comments to make regarding this application, we'd like to hear from you now. And let's start on this side, if we could, and I know there's a fair amount of people here that want to speak, and we want to hear everybody. Mark?
Mayor Helsel, distinguished council members, city manager, and residents of Pecosin. I don't feel that we explored the value of the Garden Market of the city of Pecosin at the planning meeting to the extent that I was, that I had hoped to. And to ensure that, to ensure that the understanding comes across, I've prepared a little video that, if you don't mind, we can go into that?
Bit, not a bit. We'll get some lights, and you're happy to take a look at it. Can you do your illustrations from the podium?
I'm Andy Anderson. Today, we're standing in McDonald Garden Center's local production area. Here, we grow over eighty percent of our plants that we sell at retail. It is with this local commitment and legacy that we would like to present McDonald Garden Markets. Seventy years ago, I did build the first family greenhouses in Hampton, Virginia. In those days, we produced bedding plants, pencil plants, and satias, many perennial perennials of the day. Our goal then was to provide high-quality plants into the local community. It was that passion developed during those early years that led me to a degree in horticulture. In 1973, my wife Sarah and I purchased McDonald Garden Center. Our goal in purchasing it, as it was in the early days, was to provide high-quality plants, an exciting shopping environment, and great gardening knowledge to the communities of Hampton. Today, we share these same objectives. As a third generation working on the fourth, we are excited to bring Hampton Roads' exciting new concept of McDonald Garden Markets. We'd like to share with our communities additional tax revenue and to the cities, additional job opportunities for the local residents, and exciting, wonderful opportunities in our retail and shopping districts. McDonald Garden Markets opens 2010, summer. For more than six decades, McDonald's has been committed to serving the residents of Hampton Roads through our garden centers, landscape services, and growing facilities. Offering a wide selection of annuals, perennials, edibles, trees and shrubs, houseplants, and garden accessories, McDonald has everything needed to enhance indoor and outdoor spaces. It's pretty clear we know a thing or two about providing our customers with quality products, superior customer service, and horticultural expertise. And this spring, we would appreciate the opportunity to return to the city of Pecosin with McDonald Garden Market. Deeply rooted in our communities, McDonald's is involved and supports local events like the Susan G. Komen Tidewater Race for the Cure, Relay for Light, and the Mega Scarecrow event for the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters. Our 2009 Scarecrow event raised more than $10,000 for the Children's Hospital. McDonald Garden Center is locally owned, and you can be sure we are training the fourth generation of gardening professionals. In 2004, we were recognized by our peers at Garden Centers of America as the National Garden Center of the Year. In 2009, we were designated as the National Nursery Retailer of the Year. My brother Michael and I were able to join our dad on the stage in Chicago as he delivered the address to 5,000 garden center operators from across America. Building on this legacy and longevity, we would like to once again offer the Garden Market to the Pecosin community. The Garden Market was successfully launched in the spring of 2009, conveniently located in the city's main retail district on an outparcel of the Pecosin Shopping Center. As you know, this center includes a Farm Fresh, Ace Hardware, Anis Pizza, BB&amp;T, and approximately 12 other retail stores. Obtaining a short-term lease for 8,500 square feet, we transformed this vacant lot in just ten short days from this to this. With spring just around the corner, McDonald would once again like to provide Pecosin residents the convenience, quality products, and the McDonald shopping experience throughout the spring 2010 season. As evident from last year's market, the excitement of spring-colored plants entices traffic and promotional activity to the city of Pecosin. The Garden Market only requires eight parking spaces during peak times. Like last year, we plan to employ local sales associates. Many of these folks are looking forward to returning this year. We will continue to market to our local loyal customer base of 50,000 to build excitement around the Pecosin Garden Market. The real competition for the local independent merchant is not each other, rather, it's the national chains that suck business away from the community. Commissioner Bonnie Schreiber summarized it well at our hearing last month. Our job is not to pick who is supposed to be here. The goal is to be fair to all of the, in the free enterprise system. The job is to determine what is the best for all of the people of Pecosin. The market will open for four months, mid-March through mid-July. McDonald will continue to be professional in all aspects of the Pecosin Garden Market. Public safety, ease of shopping, and clean, neat presentation are still of the utmost importance. We welcome the opportunity to return to the community. As we have for 65 years, we stand ready to serve the citizens of Pecosin with the very best plant material available. We are passionate about our plants and dedicated to serving the people of Hampton Roads, and we look forward to bringing our 65 years of experience back to Pecosin. Our goal is to once again encourage consumer spending, thereby increasing tax revenue, improve the vitality of the Pecosin Shopping Center, keep Pecosin residents buying locally, and attract additional customers to the city from surrounding communities. Thank you, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you.
So I'd just like to summarize in that the city staff had recommended approval of our application, of our conditional use application, and we would appreciate your favorable support of these conditions, of the conditions that were detailed in their review.
Any questions, Mark?
I just have one question. Is there a reason why you couldn't be here year-round?
Originally, we had turned in the conditional use application without any date restrictions on it, and during, when I went to turn in the application, we were kind of advised, and there was a conversation on when we wanted to do it, and we said, well, we'd like to be available to do it in the spring and in the fall, and anytime we can sell plants. But we sort of got guided that, hey, you got the best shot at the spring, so why don't you put that on the application? We would very much like the opportunity to be here in other parts of the year as well.
How about 12 months of the year? And a more permanent type.
Right now, from what we've seen out of, out of the sales that we generated in the springtime, it would be difficult to make a business model out of the 12 months, a 12-month program. As we see increased sales from it, hopefully, there could possibly be more of an opportunity for a more permanent establishment. The same, at the same time, the gardening season itself is a very seasonable business, and the majority of the plant sales occur in the, in the spring, and then there's an additional some in the fall. But even at our main flagship stores that take up 10 acres, there's very little sales in the middle of the summer and January and February seasons.
Mark, you and I talked today, this afternoon, you and I talked this afternoon, and my question is parallel to Tom's, I guess. If you considered being in Pecosin full-time, 12 months out of the year, do you have time to make those arrangements between, I don't know what your selling times are, I have no idea about any of that, but, I mean, last year, I think you were around April when you opened. Is that fair?
Yes.
End of April, middle of April, somewhere in that neighborhood. So if you wanted to, even on that piece of property, if you wanted to commit to 12 months out of the year, do you have time to do that?
Doing exactly what we did last year, yes, I have, I mean, we're prepared to do what we did last year tomorrow.
Well, my question is, though, if, could you make permanent establishment there in that length of time?
And I guess I'm not quite sure what, what it is required.
Some of the things that you, some of the things that you would need to do is have a permanent structure. You know, you'd have to jump through a few hoops, just, you know, the very same hoops that everyone else has to jump through. Would you be able to do that in that period of time?
I, if it, I'm sorry, I hadn't fully explored what it takes to, what it takes to put a permanent structure there. I've never even built a permanent structure.
Okay, not trying to put you on the spot, which is, you know, we talked about that, and I was just curious if you'd thought about it since we talked today. Okay. All right, any other questions, Mark? Okay, Mark, thank you. Video was well done, but I think, is that your dad?
Yes.
He did a better job than you did.
Was it his daughter? I think she did the best job. The fourth generation, she was good.
Let's start on this side and ask if there are any comments from this part of our audience. Harry? Good.
I guess everybody knows me, Barry Tinger. I live on 33 Ferguson Street. That was a really good presentation and everything like that. That looked really great, but really, the couple of issues that I have a problem with is the, you know, if you want to come to Pecosin, you know, do like every other business in Pecosin, come 12 months out of the year is my main thing, and do all the site work and all the work it takes to open up a business in Pecosin. You know, I spend a lot of money in paving, curbing gutter, retention ponds, and everything that you're supposed to do. So I just feel like it's, you know, if somebody wants to come to Pecosin, do what every other business in Pecosin does. Because the only reason you're doing the conditional use permit, it seems like to me, is because you don't want to come into Pecosin 12 months. You want to come in, and when it's prime time, make the money and leave, which I don't think that helps out a lot of the local businesses in Pecosin that stays in Pecosin all the time. We're paying real estate taxes. We're paying for our vehicles taxes, and we're losing, you know, business from y'all coming in. So the money that you're making really, you know, is a little different, you know. So I think if you let them in with a conditional use permit, just because they want to come in part-time, you open the floodgates to everybody else coming in. Nobody would ever really want to come to Pecosin, buy a property, and do all the site work and everything that it takes to do a business. So you have a lot of tents and people in vans trying to do businesses. So I don't think we're really looking for that in this community. We want to have people that want to expand the businesses in Pecosin and stay in Pecosin. So that's one of the main things that I have for that. And I really appreciate y'all, you know, support, and if you have any questions or anything, I'd be glad to answer them.
We made, down the road, Barry. Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, one more time, Mark, sure.
I wanted to state two things. That the location of the property that we're on, and it was in the staff layout that came along with the recommendations, that the property there really does provide a unique location on, and that it was a part of the shopping center, and the ability to share a lot of the improvements, the parking, the restrooms, the property drainage works very well in itself and along with the shopping center. So that, that in itself just really presents itself for a unique opportunity. That's one of the reasons that we chose the site to begin with. The other thing that I did want to mention was, we went back and we looked at, we do a substantial garden rewards customer program to track what customers are buying and what we can do for our customers. In that analysis, what we pulled from, we realized that forty percent of the customers that we served at this Pecosin Shopping Center actually came from outside of Pecosin Inn. It was, we were bringing business into the community as we came in, so I did want to...
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else over here? Okay, let's go, let's go to this side. I know that amongst those 12 ladies, there's somebody more. Kathy?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, please.
My name is Kathy Abel Nelson, and I'm here as a business owner and a Pecosin merchant. There are two distinct and equally valid sides to this issue, and the conditional use permit as it regards McDonald's Garden Center presents a dilemma among my friends and business associates in a difficult economy. When the recession came along two years ago and pulled the rug out from under everyone, we found out that if your customers don't have money, we don't have customers, no matter how much they love you and how loyal they are. Businesses everywhere are struggling to stay alive until the economy improves and the job market improves. When McDonald's Garden Center set up shop last spring, they offered a superior product along with great customer service. A huge number of Pecosin and York County residents already make the pilgrimage to McDonald's in Hampton, and all those people came to the Pecosin location in addition to many Pecosin residents who would have spent their spring gardening budget out of town. McDonald's also hired from Pecosin. As a result of all those people coming into town with money to spend, my business benefited from the exposure. What I know about conditional use permits wouldn't fit into a symbol, but I will speak to the character of Mark Anderson and the reputation of McDonald's Garden Center. Mark Anderson and his family offer a superior product, locally grown, with plenty of variety and knowledgeable, friendly customer service. That was a good reflection on Pecosin. Mark Anderson went out of his way to get to know the surrounding merchants and extend a hand of friendship, and McDonald's put our PBA businesses into their advertising at no cost to us during our special events. That was being a good neighbor. To the best of my knowledge, McDonald's Garden Center has followed the rules and complied with the city regulations at every turn. That's good corporate citizenship. I believe that this bout with economic hardship has presented an opportunity to expand our vision, and this would not have happened in more prosperous times. McDonald's Garden Center did its part to make Pecosin look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Brenda Messer. I live at One Hopkins Court. Basically, the garden center is in my backyard, and I'm in favor of this business. They're quiet, there was no trash, and it's a much better view from my bedroom window with the plants and stuff there than there was with the mud, like you saw in the video there. I thought they were great neighbors, a good business. Now, I do most of my gardening shopping, I go to Dreamscape's first, and for the past 10 years or so, if I don't find what I want, then I go elsewhere, which normally meant out of Pecosin. I probably spent 95, 98% of my money last year in Pecosin between the two businesses. And I thought they made a great business there, much better than the gas station that was being considered a couple of years ago, so.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lynette Jeffrey, 120 River Road. I just wanted to say there's two ways to look at businesses testing the waters in Pecosin, which is what I think McDonald's Garden Center is doing, and we need to be appreciative that they chose us instead of York County or Newport News. We need to look at it, no, they may not be a permanent fixture here right now, but doggone I'm glad they're considering us, and we need to look at it that way and embrace a new opportunity for our city. And also, look at it as having more tax dollars, look at it as employing more of our people, and look at it as just an expansion on the peninsula of a wonderful family business and letting them have an outlet in Pecosin, to me, is a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Kathy Steinbach, and I worked at McDonald Garden Center last spring and summer, and I did own a business here in town for 10 years. And I had a lot of my past customers come to the garden center and just said, oh, this is so wonderful that we have such a selection of plants now. And a lot of my customers were from Newport News and different areas other than here, and when I did own a business, all of us businesses would get together and try to figure out a way to bring other communities to Pecosin. And I thought, oh, this is great, and it even beautifies the city. I was the only employee from Pecosin, but Mark didn't have a lot of time to find people from this community, and I'm sure he will try to get other, I've had parents come to me and ask if their kids could apply, that they would like a job here, here too. And we were very busy. I know the revenue would be good, and I think McDonald's, if they could do a 12-month thing, they would, but because it is a seasonal business, you don't want to open up 12 months somewhere where you know it's going to be very tough times when it is at their larger stores. I just hope you take a lot of consideration about this because all of the people that came loved it. I'm sorry there aren't more people here from Pecosin, but they see me out and about because they come to my shop. Oh, Kathy, are you going to be open again this spring? Are you going to be there? I said, well, I don't know. But I hope you take that all into consideration.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, close public hearing, and ask for any council comments. Go ahead, Gary, go ahead.
I had a, I just had a question for, oh, Debbie Vest, thank you.
Can I just get Debbie back up here for just a second?
Yeah, I want to investigate the idea a little bit of, why is it, is it limited to five months? Is there anything to do with it being a seasonal endeavor?
Yes.
Could you tell us a little bit about seasonal and, and why, you know, what, why couldn't anything, why couldn't somebody come in and sell us a gasoline for five months a year? Or could they?
Well, we don't typically control when a business operates. So if, if a business decides that they want to operate on a seasonal, in a seasonal manner, then that's fine. The only reason why the seasonal issue, issue became a problem for us was trying to identify the products that they were going to sell to make sure that they were seasonal in nature. That is the only real reason why we have been trying to control the actual time period for when they are operating.
So we're, so it was staff's intention to try and limit it to seasonal types of things?
Exactly. Because there is a provision in the B2 district, in the zoning ordinance, which allows seasonal sales. So there was two provisions that we were basically applying to this particular application. One, that it was a garden center, and secondly, they were only selling seasonal items.
Okay, and, and when I read their application, I mean, they're selling plants, which are, I recognize are very seasonal, but also plant care products, assorted containers, fountains and statuary, tools and, and garden furniture. And some of those things you pretty much buy all year-round.
Well, we discussed that in those type of, that merchandise was basically an accessory to the primary, which was the plant sale. We did talk to the city attorney about it, especially with the furnishings, and our, his concern or, or his interpretation was that the outdoor furnishings that they were selling, again, were something that you would only use during the summer and spring season. So therefore, it would make it a seasonal item.
Okay, that was my question.
Debbie, the property is zoned properly for that type of.
Sure it is.
Business currently. So they could establish a full-time business there by rights.
Correct.
So if they did that, what would they need to do, to do that?
They would first need to go through the site plan requirements and basically show that they can positively drain the property, they can meet stormwater quality and quantity, that they would, they would also have to build a permanent structure, they would have to provide landscaping and onsite parking spaces.
Could the parking spaces be shared if that was in agreement with the neighbors?
Provided that you are not making the existing parking spaces in the Pecosin Shopping Center deficient. We would take a look at the entire site to make sure that there's no deficiency caused by the shared.
So if we did, if we did this straight up and McDonald's Garden Center came in as a full-time business, we'd actually have the opposite effect, because what I see here is 10 conditions of operating a business, which the government clearly doesn't need to be in the business of operating a business. I think that's one thing that we all recognize. But now we're starting to say, because you won't be here, we have to kind of get down and say, well, you can do this, but you can't do that because we think it's best for the citizens, which kind of puts government in not really a great spot. I think government just wants to say, you know, B2, this is allowed by rights within the B2 district. If you had a 12-month lease on the property, then you are in business, and however long you operate it for is up to you. That's the way it would normally be for a seasonal business.
Correct.
Correct. And is there any regulation about the size of the building that they would need to build? Could it be a small? Okay.
Well, I think as we spoke, or I spoke to someone, if there was vacant parcel within the Farm Fresh Shopping Complex, that could serve as a permanent structure also. Am I correct on that?
Based on, this is where we're going back to the seasonal. The seasonal interpretation was not intended to control when they operate their business. It was because of what they were, what they were trying to sell. So let's say if they decided that they wanted to lease a spot in the Pecosin Shopping Center, then, and if they wanted to use the adjacent parcel, which is considered an out parcel of Pecosin Shopping Center, they technically could continue to use that, that out parcel to display their items, provided that they have a year-round lease with Pecosin Shopping Center, but in our interpretation of what they could sell, we would want to make sure that it was seasonal in nature.
But seasonal, and the thing about plants, and they're, they're right, seasonal is seasonal. Plants, you know, there's three seasons here, there's three months here, there's a fall season, and there's a Christmas poinsettia season. So there's a season for each, each one of those things. But this is the only nursery that I see that's operating, you know, in satellite locations right now. Okay? So let's expand that, and let's take McDonald's out of the equation, and let's take Dreamscape's out of the equation, and let's just look at the, at the issue. The issue is, do we want businesses to come in and operate under conditional use permits because they can find a season for their product? Okay? And we say that the florist can come in and operate out of a location similar to this or a roadside stand only in February, around Valentine's Day, or only in the summer because flowers are in season then. Can we say that a restaurant who sells food of a certain season, let's say it's seafood of a certain season, that for a certain season, they can set up and do this in this manner? Aren't we kind of going under, aren't we kind of going under the underpinnings of what business is supposed to look like? I guess from the planning departments thing, I mean, if you see what I'm saying. I'm basically saying, Ken, are we setting a precedent here? Because everybody's right in that McDonald's brought a great product, they brought something that Pecosin desperately needs. Nobody is arguing that they have a great business and a great family business. They basically are offering something that nobody else was, okay? All those things are true, and all of those things are good, and they're bringing citizens in. But what does it mean long-term to the other businesses here? Could they see competition very similar to this because we can now say, well, we've set a precedent here? That's my biggest concern, and, and those are the words I'm looking for, something that, that tells me that, no, this is a, this is a clear-cut case, but it doesn't sound like a clear-cut case, that this is only seasonal. I would think if I'm selling tomatoes in the tomato season, that's a season. If I'm selling poinsettias in the poinsettia season, that's a season. But this is a business that can sell eight to nine months a year. Yes, I know there's a couple of months that, that don't go. But I'm just afraid for what it means to everybody else if we set this precedent. And I see it as having the opposite effect, in that government is going to be in every decision of operating this business, and I don't want to see us there. I don't want to get into, you can, you can only operate between March 1st and July 31st. You know, I want that to be the business owner's decision, and those are the things that I'm trying to avoid. So if they had a 12-month lease, and they only chose to be open for so much time of that, then they're on the same playing field and they're, they're making their own decisions.
Correct. And that's the goal. The goal is not to control the actual times that they operate, just like we do not typically control any of the other commercial establishments along with Creek Road, unless there's a concern about a 24-hour operation such as we recently had with Zooms. The seasonal was only applied because, and we don't control what goes on inside of a building, the seasonal only applies to outdoor display. And actually, I appreciate your comments, welcome to my world in trying to interpret the zoning ordinance, and we are in fact bringing an ordinance amendment to you, hopefully, next month, which will help to clarify this very issue, to make it more clear-cut and more understandable to the average public.
And I don't know how many other members of council have been notified by other factions that want to do similar types of business here. And where do we draw the line? Are we now going to have them popping up on With Creek Road during seasons? I mean, is that what we're going to do? I, I'm just not sure that, and Jean nailed it in terms of McDonald's reputation. You know, I come and visit you folks every Christmas, and I guarantee you, my wife's there every Christmas, and, and, and all the times during the year, and that's no, that's no slam against Barry Tigler and Dreamscape's. As far as you folks having a great reputation, there's, there's no, there's no discussion about that. And Mark, I've gotten to know you a little bit, and, and, you know, your integrity is impeccable. There's no, no issue there. My issue is, is got to do with fairness, and are we opening the door to other like businesses along the With Creek Quarter to just come in on a seasonal basis? If we have two more, for instance, that decide the property across from Pecosin Drug Store, I'll just give you a good example of, at least where it's been, I've been guided, you know, if you put two more nurseries there, you're not going to be able to turn them down if this is approved. If, if they want to come there and, and operate the same way McDonald's, they can do that. They can do that. And I'm not sure then that we've done the right thing by McDonald's to offer up that competition, not that there's anything wrong with competition in business, but I'm just, I'm not 100% sold on the fairness of what we're trying to do. The reputation, the product, to be honest, the fact that the corner was beautified, there's absolutely no question about that, and I had the privilege of looking at it all summer. I was right across the street from it, and I think I've expressed that to Mark more than one time. Kathy was able to have the planners remain here, which I thought was, you know, just a great thing for you to do. And I, and I would certainly entertain and, and be ready to assist and help. And I think this council would, and I know the staff would, in anything that you wanted to do on a, on a permanent basis. I've got some problems with fairness. Other than fairness, there is no issue here. But what do I tell those folks tomorrow morning when they call if this is approved? There's nothing to tell them, just go submit your application, because there's nothing we can do. The precedent was set, and you can, you can open up on a seasonal basis, and if that means somebody pulling into that, being able to lease that property, and when spot season comes in and they want to sell spot there, how are we going to tell them we can't do that? And I'm not real sure that's exactly what we want to do. that? And I'm not real sure that's exactly what we want to do. You know, would I like to see you join the community? Absolutely. Absolutely. And, and we would like to, we'd like to help. But that's just me. There are five other members of, of council here. And you need to hear from those, those folks as well. Kerry?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say also that I absolutely would welcome you here on a permanent basis as all our other businesses are. And everything's been said about how good your product is and what a good job you do. I absolutely agree with. But I think that it's somewhat unfair to our established businesses to allow you to come in under, under these particular conditions. And if you want to come in full-time, I would be 100% behind you. But I agree that, as somebody was telling me on the phone the other day, you know, we'll have somebody wanting to cut hair out of the back of a van. And I'm just not sure that we want to set that, that precedent in the city. And I think it's not very business-friendly to our existing businesses if we do that. And that's about all I got to say on it.
Okay. All right. Frank, do you have anything?
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be very wrong, but is issuing one conditional use permit, is that going to really open up the gates for all other types of businesses that want to come into Pecosin? Or would we look at each one on an individual, case-by-case basis? Maybe, maybe in your example, Mr. Mayor, with nurseries, that could be covered under this conditional use permit also? I don't know.
And, and I don't have an answer to the question.
I, and I, I've wrestled with this, this for quite a while. And I, and I have to put aside, you know, what, if I put aside what precedent it sets and I put aside, also like Gene was saying, the personalities involved here, because you know, they're all good people. I mean, you've got tailors involved, you've got floral fashions involved, you've got Dreamscape's involved. I mean, there's a bunch of people who are, who are affected by all of this. You know, I, it's, this is one of the harder decisions we've had to make because there is no, there's no way you can make everybody happy. And there, there are downsides to things. You know, I believe in following the ordinances we have and, and trying to, you know, be as fair as we can. And the only reason we're doing this is because we have to do a continued use, conditional use permit right now. I've received a lot of comments from people, when I say a lot, probably talked to eight or nine people about this. In the Pecosin Business Alliance, I'm in the Pecosin Business Alliance because I want to see Pecosin businesses do well. Kathy, sorry, it's, it's, no, it's, it's, unfortunately, you can't say anything because we, we closed the public hearing unless the, the mayor liked to open it up. So that's, sorry. I was trying, trying to ignore you. So in the Pecosin Business Alliance, I mean, I've, I've heard people both for it and against it, and also people who aren't in it, before and against it. And they all, they all bring up the, the really good points about, you know, how good the quality is. I mean, I'm conflicted here because my wife shopped there an awful lot last year. And you have, you have a great, a great supply. And the city, for every $100,000 worth of merchandise you sell, the city brings in about $1,200 in profit for us. And then of course, some goes to the state too, on, on top of that. But we get about $1,200 for every $100,000 you put in. But putting aside the conditional use that you were talking about, Frank, I mean, we really want to have full-time businesses here. And as, as in government, as a policy type of thing, I want to have a level playing field and see everyone just follow the rules that are there and make as few exceptions that favor one side or the other as possible. And, and I, when I look at this, I see we're putting it in the seasonal sales category. And a lot of the things like statuaries and all those and garden tools, I mean, I buy garden tools all, you know, and, and statuaries and things like that, that all year round. So for me also, the, one of the big issues is just the fairness issue. And I would like to say that also the planning board did recommend that we disapprove it. And so that is one of the things that I have to weigh in my mind. The fairness issue is a big one. And I'd, I'd be absolutely ecstatic if we could find some way to put up a permanent structure of some type and, and be there year-round. Whether it's manned year-round or not is another matter because some businesses don't operate all year-round, but they do have a permanent address. And, and that would be good and I think could, could lower your overhead.
Okay. Kerry, go ahead.
Yeah, we certainly aren't trying to establish business hours, hours of operation, days a week, anything else. But a permanent versus temporary is the issue that I have. That was up.
Okay. Tracy?
Yeah, I'd like to say to Debbie, thank you for planning on bringing a modification to the ordinance because when I went, went to make this decision, I wanted to base it on what are the rules? And as it is, the rules really aren't very clear. And I, and I feel a little bit like we may not be being fair enough to the McDonald's company in that they didn't really know the rule, you know, whether this would apply or not either. So I, so I do feel bad about the fact that it looks like you may not get approval. So thank you for bringing a clear ordinance because what I want to see, and I want my decisions to be based on following the laws. But I think one of the purposes of having permanent businesses make permanent improvements is so that, your business was gorgeous for the four months it was here, but for the past seven months, it's been a mud hole. And I think that's one of the reasons that we, we have, you know, permanent business rules. And, and so I would, and I would like to tell you that everybody that I have, that has spoken to me, other than the people whose pocketbooks are going to be directly affected by you coming in as competition, all of the other citizens have, have expressed they really want you back. And I do want to express to you, we would love to have you back. And I just, I think you need to do it within, within the, the rules that we're kind of making clearer now.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other comments? I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Just, just because you're so nice, I'm going to allow you to come up here and...
Shouldn't be explode otherwise.
Deal is you got to come up here. So everybody...
Is it because it's floral? Is that the reason?
I'll allow you to speak, but I want to allow you to ask us questions.
Oh.
If you have a comment, we're, we're happy to hear it.
Okay. Well, I know the fireworks were there for about the same time we were. And they're seasonal.
There is a, there is a state statute that governs those folks. We don't, Wayne, can you help me with that? I don't think we have any control.
They can sell wherever they want.
They have to come here and pay a $500 fee.
There is a, there is a fee structure relative to that, yes.
But it's not our decision as to whether they...
I don't think we get involved other than the $500.
It's a thirty-day time limit.
Yeah. But I mean, is there a state statute of some sort that, that regulates those things? You know, do we particularly, do I particularly want to see them there? No, ma'am.
No. Well, it sounds like we're going back to the mud hole.
Okay. Nick, just before you vote, I want to explain one thing to you. Under, under our ordinance, there are certain things that you can do in the B2 zone as a matter of right. Okay? And for example, you can have sale of seasonal items such as Christmas trees or produce. But that doesn't address the seasonal items that have been discussed tonight. So as a matter of right, you can't, in my opinion, you can't do what the nursery wants to do because our statute doesn't permit that. Our ordinance doesn't permit that. So the ordinance then says, if you want to do something that's not listed as a right, then you have to do a conditional use permit. So the conditional use permit comes forward because our zoning ordinance does not permit McDonald's to do what it wants to do with reference to the seasonal items that they propose to sell. Then when you go to our, when you go to our ordinance that relates to B2 district and you start saying, now we need to get a conditional use permit, it's not real clear there either because it says temporary uses such as carnival, circuses, fair, or festival. Okay? So when you look at the conditional use provisions, it's also not spelled out. So in the conversations that Debbie and I had, what we tried to do was come up with a, regardless of what your decision is, to come up with a proposal that would allow us to fit within these definitions that we had to work with, none of which were perfectly clear as to how to go about doing what the request was. And so the seasonal aspect of it was done, as Debbie said, to give a definition because we didn't have a definition that said how you fit into the seasonal sales. And so that's when the timeframe was put in place because you could sell plants at some other time other than the spring selling season. So when McDonald's says to you, we didn't request that, they didn't request that there be this limit of seasonal sales. That was part of the city's effort to come up with a definition that made some sense in trying to complete our ordinances, which were not totally complete as to how to go about the process. Just so you understood how we got there.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Is there, is there a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we disapprove the conditional use permit for McDonald's to come to Pecosin on a temporary basis and also to encourage them to make it a full-time enterprise here.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Just a second.
I'm second, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion being second that we deny the, the request. Are there any other questions, any other comments from council? Okay. Yes, sir.
Just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
A yes vote disapproves the resolution for them to come here.
Right. On a temporary basis.
On a temporary basis.
Okay. Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
No.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to one.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. All right, folks, let's move on to our second public hearing. It's an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance. The subject is definition of height of building. We've discussed this during, on many occasions in work sessions, open sessions that had to do, I guess it was first brought to light with the Marina Project. I know we've talked extensively about it. I don't know that there's, you know, if any, if we need a presentation, I'm not sure what good that would do. I think we, we all, as I remember it at least, we're pretty much on board with, with changing that. So if that is the case, and there's someone prepared with a motion.
I think you had open the public hearing.
Yeah, but, yeah, you're right, Wayne. I apologize. But once that public hearing is, is done, if we could, you know, move it, move it ahead, that'd be great. Okay, let's open a public hearing then and ask if there's anyone in the audience that like, would like to speak regarding amending the zoning ordinance. It's got to do with the definition, definition of height of buildings. Is there anyone that would like? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Halsel.
Good evening.
Members of Pecosin City Council, I'm Robert Duckett. I'm the Public Affairs Director for the Peninsula Housing and Builders Association. Our members are comprised of local contractors, plumbers, electricians. And on behalf of our members, we'd like to express our support for the zoning ordinance amendment before you tonight. Our local contractors often build in many different localities. And this revision here will bring the local definition of Pecosin here more in line with, with other jurisdictions. And, and we appreciate that consistency. And it also brings it a little more in line with the Uniform Statewide Building Code, makes the code simpler, and we would urge your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duckett. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
One comment from Mr. Duckett, and that is, if you have other suggestions that could help make our code more uniform and more builder-friendly, I'm sure we'd like to know what they'd be.
Okay. All right. We're more than happy to do that.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public hearing and then ask for a motion.
For your wish, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, Section 1-3 definition.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Second to that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a motion made. Second, we adopt the ordinance. Any other concerns, comments, questions? If not, Judy, please.
This is a first reading.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to our third public hearing. It's a pre-budget public hearing, second quarter finance analysis and revenue projections. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow citizens, members of the community to provide input to you and to me as we work through the 2011 budget and also think towards the 2012 budget. For the information of those that may be watching at home, our revenues at the local level have stabilized by and large. And you'll see that you're projecting a modest net deficit for the year, revenue and expense. Still early, we may improve upon that. But essentially, our local revenues are holding. Our state revenues are not, especially as it relates to next year. We're currently estimating on the city side of the budget, a net deficit somewhere between 600 and 700,000. That could go up significantly or be impacted as the General Assembly completes its work. School system, and it changes by the day, but the, the net hole in the school budget could be as high as 2.2 million, depending on which version of the House and Senate budget bills you see, that number may come down to the 1.8 million neighborhood. You may recall just six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, we thought the number might be as small as 900,000. So it is a moving target, but it provides the backdrop for next year. Teresa Owens is here if you have questions about the second quarter report, but it is, it is included in your package. Superintendent Hestaff are here if you have a question for them. But if you do not, we'll do appropriate help in the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions before we get moved over to the public hearing?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, because of, I, I believe that one thing that we've, we've got to do is make sure that everybody knows how the state may impact them. I'd, I'd kind of like to hear from the schools.
Sure. Sure. We can put the superintendent back on the spot.
Good evening, Mayor Halsel and members of council.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here today. I, right now, as Mr. Wheeler said, it very much is a moving target. When the governor, Governor Kane released his budget back in December, between state cuts and other cost increases that we know we can anticipate for next year, we were looking at the 1.1 million range for the budget cuts we would need to make. Governor McDonald then came up with some proposals that he released early last week, which put us at the 2.2 million mark in terms of the cuts that we would have to make to our budget. Just keeping in mind, our school budget currently this year is about 21.6 million. We did cut 1.2 million last year coming into this year. The Senate did put out, the Senate and the House put out some information yesterday in terms of budget proposals. The Senate information, the House information, roughly, we're looking at potentially about 1.8 million. And the Senate is further down with a lower, lower cut for us. So we really don't know where we're going to fall at this point, and that's why it truly is a moving target. We hope the General Assembly finishes its work on time, but we're not even guaranteed of that this year. I have presented our budget updates throughout the last couple of months and have tried my best to make sure the community understands that whether it's 1.1 million, 2.2 million, 1.8 million, 1.6 million, the budget cuts that we are going to have to make will impact services and instruction to our students. You can't come off of a year where we made 1.2 million dollars in cuts and move into what will certainly be over a million dollars in cuts and not begin to impact services. When coming into the budget year last year, we had the lowest per pupil cost in the state. We were doing things very efficiently, in a very lean manner, and providing a great education to our children. But you can only cut so much before you start impacting what we're doing. So rest assured, we're doing everything we can to do, develop a budget, to maintain the highest quality possible. But people need to understand that we just can't continue to offer everything that we've offered when we're having to make these kinds of cuts that are coming as a result of the state cuts. And, you know, I do want to continue to say to all of you that we truly appreciate the support, that you're giving us. The community's been wonderful, providing a lot of feedback, and we truly appreciate that because it's helping us develop this budget during these very challenging times. Any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer. Just hard to do specifics right now.
Just, I don't have any questions for you. But I'll say again that, that we are deeply grateful, number one, that you're on board. Number two, that, that you have a, a staff that has worked extremely well with, with Randy and, and his staff. The communication is just absolutely fabulous. And, and I'm comfortable when the school superintendent stands here and tells us that we've got some serious issues to deal with. I have not seen a budget like this in my I have not seen a budget like this in my tenure on this council, ever, and I'm very concerned, and expressed this earlier, regarding the integrity of our school system. Probably over the last 30 years that I've been playing around with this, you know, we've moved ahead significantly, I think. I mean, we have some new schools on board, and we did a lot of really good things, I think, for the community, and we also enticed a lot of folks to move here, primarily because of our school system. It certainly wasn't because they wanted to come here and visit Gordon Helsel. You know, they wanted to come here because we offered a great education. They left our educational facilities and moved on to higher education and certainly excelled there. And I'm very much concerned that, you know, even though my sons are out of the school system, but I have grandchildren, that one will be in the school system next year. While I have all the faith and confidence in teachers and administration, I believe without doubt that the way the state is handling this, that our educational system in Pecosin is going to be compromised, and I think that's a tragedy. And I would hope that people would heed, folks in this community would heed what you're saying and help us as we try to overcome some of this gap, which is probably impossible without some sort of an outrageous tax increase that would just serve to get all of us home. And so, you know, I think your plea is well-founded, and I would like to make that same plea. I don't see a lot of folks here tonight that want to talk about our budget, and I'm disappointed that they're not here, because we really would like to have the input of the community, not just on our schools, but, you know, we've got a large budget at the city that we have to deal with as well. But I think our big concern is our school system. That's kind of the crown jewel, and I think we need to do what we need to do to make sure it thrives and is able to continue to produce quality education and the quality students. As I look down this day, there are children of members of this council that have done extremely well, and because of the education they got here in this city. And while I'm very proud of it, I'm very concerned about it, and I would hope that we would not want to take, we do not want to find ourselves in a position where we're not envied by the Commonwealth again, because I think we are. At this juncture, our school system is envied by folks in the Commonwealth. How does Pecosin do that? And, you know, I don't take any credit for that, but you should take a lot of credit, and so should your staff, and so should the teachers, those people that are in the classrooms, and so should the students. I'm much concerned, and I'm glad that Jean asked the question, because it's, we need to join with you folks and make sure that the community hears this message because it's serious. It is extremely serious as we go into this budget, and probably more serious as we go into the next year's budget. So, you know, I don't think there's anybody in this council that can predict what will happen, but I'm not looking for a lot of good, as you well pointed out. Whether it's 1.2 million, 1.6, 1.8, we're in a box, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure we fairly ought to be in that position. So, you know, I certainly join with you, and I know this council does, and, you know, making the plea to our community, help us. And that means letters, that means emails, that means flooding the desk of our representation, the governor's office. And we're not in this alone. You know, I realize that there are other facilities, I mean, other areas that have same type of problems, but you know what? That is not what I'm sitting here for. You know, I'm sitting here to try to make an impact on our school systems and our citizens. So that's what I will join you in doing, Jennifer, in any way that I can. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get on soapbox. Jean shouldn't ask that question.
No, I'm glad. That's exactly what I was looking for.
And if I could echo something you said, which I didn't say earlier, but you're exactly right, and I made this very clear in the budget presentations that I've publicly done and that are on our website and also running on our TV channel, but it's not only this year problem. The cuts that were predicted in when Governor Kane's budget came out in December put us at a $1.3 million cut next year. So we're looking at well over $3.5 million in cuts over a three-year period, which, again, with a budget our size, is why I, it is imperative that the community understand we are talking about cuts to services and instruction for our children. So, you know, we're still trying to sort through what the new House proposal and Senate proposal does, especially to, in terms of next year, but know that as we're developing this budget for this year, for FY11, we know that we're looking at problems for FY12, so it's a long-term problem that's just not going to go away in another year.
So the instruction is the core of the educational system.
Right. I mean, when we're talking about impacting instruction, we're talking about core services, we're talking about reducing some opportunities in terms of academic programs, we're talking about increased class size. I mean, these are the things that are going to happen because we're talking about budget cuts a second year in a row of well over a million dollars, and, you know, according to what Governor McDonald pulled out last week, 2.2 million would be the result of those cuts for us. So I thank you for your support and your conversations with the community as well. We're trying everything we can. I do, I can attest to the fact that I know we've got community members that have been writing and emailing our legislators, and I so appreciate that.
Appreciate that, yep.
And hopefully they'll continue to dialogue with you all too as we move through this.
Any questions, Jennifer? Anybody else? Tom?
One thing I wanted to echo, of course, what Gordon said about the schools. That's why my family came to Pecosin was for the schools, and both my kids are out, and, you know, the reason, one of the reasons I'm here is to help support the school system. And it's important people recognize that the schools are being disproportionately hit this year. I mean, you're talking 1.2 to 1.8 million hit on what you have. We have about a $600,000 hit. Yes, we have a smaller budget, but you're getting hit more. We don't know where it's going to end. We don't know how it's going to finally come out when all these proposals are reconciled, and they have to come up with something this year. But I think one thing as a council that we need to be wary of is we might have to give more aid to the schools to help some stopgap. We can't fix the problem because a 1.8, a 1.8 million, that's a 10 cent raise on the property tax, and we're not, I can only speak for myself, but I don't really think that's in the cards. But I think that we have to balance the pain this year between our budget and the school budget, the city budget and the school budget, and so your budget proposal to us at the end of the year, excuse me, at the end of March, is going to be very useful, and I'd like to have us have a good, in-depth meeting with them. We didn't have a meeting last year with the school board, but I think that's something that we should be doing this year.
We certainly can do it.
You know, when you, to propose us, to propose to us the budget, and we can talk about it, and it's still going to be a moving target at the end of March, I think. It's, this is politics, there's too much pain to go around, so the decisions, they're going to throw as much into the future as they can by making what I think are false cuts to retirement, you know, how much you contribute to retirement. We're going to undercontribute now, hoping we can make up later, things like that. We don't know how much that's going to take away from the pain. We don't know how they're going to redistribute the pain between the city and the schools. But this is really bad, and just so people realize, you talked about this year and next year, the cuts, and then when you get the Virginia Municipal League information, they say that the following two years, the best budget projections they have are an additional 4% cut. So the state is 11% over budget this year and next year in this biennium, and 15% over budget in the following biennium. So this is not a one-and-done, and we really have to work at this for a while and make structural changes that are going to allow us to survive. We do support the schools, and we'll do everything we can.
Well, I guess in closing, and to step up on my soapbox for a second, it's obvious to me, it should be obvious to the citizens, that the state is going to balance their budget with no tax increase. That is basically their cry. That's how they got elected. But what that does mean is that tax increases are being passed down to the local bodies. Okay, so the local dollars are going to have to make up for state budget decreases. I think when you put it in big picture, what I heard was about $3 million, no matter how you slice it, out of a $27 million budget, that's 15%, okay? Last year, our teachers suffered at the expense of pay raises, okay? There's no question about that, and there's no question that this city government will try and make a balanced proposal on how to ease the pain of the state government. But I think it's clear, and it should be clear, to everybody within the city of Pecosin that, one, our revenues are flat, okay? We are not going down as the state is. So the city's budget, due to the work of some very fine staff, and this council for being on the conservative side, are in a very good situation fiscally, okay? In addition to that, what has this city done in anticipation of this problem? Well, just last meeting, we did go out to bond council, and because of the finances of this city and the reputation of this city, we're able to drop our interest rates another full percentage point, or at least that's the thought as we're waiting for the bond council to come back. So we've come up with an extra $400,000 just in refinancing to help bridge the gap. So that's everything that your city can do, but it will be incumbent on the taxpayers of this city to bridge that gap, and I don't want to sugarcoat that or anything else. I said we don't want to pay it in our state income taxes, but we would prefer to pay it in our local taxes, and that is the way that the state appears to be doling it out. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that from Pecosin's standpoint, our revenue is flat, but when you, when we have to make up for these state shortfalls, it's going to come out of your personal checkbook through the city government to somewhat bridge that gap. You cannot cut 15% without getting into what is a labor-intensive business of educating our best and our brightest students. It takes people to educate, and education is all about people. It's not about the buildings. We're saving $500,000 on the buildings. That's what we just talked about. But are we willing to give up our teachers for the state not to do their share of education? I'll get off my stuff.
Well said. Okay, anybody else for opening the public hearing?
Can I?
Jennifer, thank you so much.
You're welcome. If I sit down, since there might be people who watch your TV program and not ours as much, just a reminder that there is a lot of information about the budget on our website, www.pecosin.k12.vad.us, and on, it does run pretty regularly on our TV channel. And March 16th is the date that the superintendent's proposed budget will come out, but there's a very good chance we won't have enough information from the House and Senate to have that firm, but we will have a budget to you on March 31st. So thank you for the commercial.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, let's open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to say anything regarding the pre-budget public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to talk to us about our budgets? Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Like you believed I was coming up, I was going to write it all on one hand. But I wrote some notes. Good evening. My name is Robert Cox. I live at 14 Pecosin River Drive, and I think you're having a great discussion, and I'm really going to reflect some of the discussion that's gone around amongst council. And these are really my ideas. I basically don't support tax increases to fund the operating budget, the city's operating budget. I am very concerned, like you, about the school. I think that really is something that we're all particularly proud of, and what's been said around here is, I support that. I do think a tax increase may be, and we don't know what this is yet, if it's needed, we may need one to be appropriate for the school, both for operating and investment in the future, repairs and so on in the middle school. But the city needs to reduce expenditures, and unfortunately, the only way to do that to the level we need is to deal with the manpower, as I think you've heard this a number of times from me. And this is so difficult because we're dealing with people's livelihoods, you having to make those decisions, and I'd just like to share with you what I think are the fairest ways to reduce manpower, cost at least, and I'd like you to consider these in order of priority. I know you're doing, working with some of these. I would strongly support continuing to offer early retirement to those people who are eligible. I think we've done this, and I think that's a great program. This is the first step. Second, I don't know if this has been explored much, but job sharing seems to me a fair way to do business. It may not be the most efficient in cutting costs, but it's a fair way, and there's many of us who might like to have retired earlier than we did but weren't willing to give up everything, but we would like to have time over money. And if there's those situations where we could get agreements between like-minded kind of work in administration or in finance or treasury comes to mind, that would seem to me to be something worth exploring. The next level, of course, is reduced benefits. This is something that's been talked about. It's not nice to do it, but it may be the next, third option. Lastly, there's unpaid furloughs, I think is the word, or reduced time so that we can, basically it's a pay cut. All of these issues would reduce people's, take-home pay, but at least we could ensure that our employees continue with jobs. But unfortunately, any of these measures are only a short-term fix, which we need right now, I know that, but to me, the most important lesson of this situation we're in right now for the city's future is to ensure that we keep a manpower at a level that we can comfortably afford without forcing us to defer more investment in the city infrastructure and schools that we've talked about, parks, other items that have been deferred on occasions. We need to keep investing in the city. To enable us to move to a position where we have a workforce that we really can maintain stable, I would like to see the city move to a flexible manpower plan where we have a core staff and generally go to, as people retire, as people move on, replace with contractor force where feasible. And I think there's many areas, and I'm not going to go into that. We should move towards this as a long-term plan, and then so that in times like these, we are in a more flexible position to move up and down with the economy. This is very simplistic, I realize that. You've got huge numbers here, particularly in the school, but I think as a strategy, we're finding ourselves, as many like us, in a position where we're having to make such hard decisions about people, lives, and long-term employment that we can avoid in the future. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Don?
Mayor Helsel, councilmembers, I'm Don Baker at Nine Heavens Circle, Pecosin Course. I have an issue here that I would like to make some recommendations on. I didn't come prepared with notes to put on the board, however, so I would appreciate if you would interrupt me, ask me questions. I'm going to talk about the road infrastructure, repair of road infrastructure, and this is, this is troubles that's caused by others that come in and do work on our road infrastructure, and they leave it in disarray, and they do not plan on coming back. And our city employees and the taxpayers have to repair what they left. I'll start off by giving you some figures, and then I'll tell you where I come this figures from. I'm using a four-man crew for 200,000, 2,000 hours a year at $75 an hour, and that's a loaded rate. It costs, it costs for labor. Now, this is, remember, this is the undo, well, not what we did, not what the citizens did, but others coming in and working on our infrastructure by cutting roads, drilling, boring, direction boards, and what have you. It's costing us $570,000 a year to repair what they left us. It's costing us $125,000 a year. It's costing us $125,000 a year for material, for a total of $690,000 a year that we, that the citizens, don't have any responsibility for. Now, my recommendations are, we issue permits when contractors or anyone comes in and works on our right-of-way, city right-of-way. They cut, they cut the roads, they drill, do directional bore, or whatever they do that damages our road, they repair it. They be held accountable for all expenses if they don't repair it, that we do. And this can be issued by two ways. There are, there's a misutility, number one, so we know when they're there. Plus, we want a permit, and it may be a $5 or $10 permit, but we have compliance inspectors that go out and follow up and make sure that these people are doing the proper repair work. I will have to say that as long as I've lived in Pecosin, I have not seen one road repaired correctly that was cut. Our board, board is just as bad, and it's costing us $690,000 a year. Now, we have compliance inspectors who know the rules and regulations, I'm sure, on the proper method for repairing, whether it's been cut, et cetera. We have practices, I'm sure. Let's adhere to those practices, and let's get a permit process in place. And we're talking about $5 or $10 per permit, so we can pay for our bond and debt road cuts. It's strictly costing us a lot of money. $690,000 a year for someone else coming in our home and breaking something and leaving it, and we paying for it. Does anyone, please ask some questions.
We're not going to do question and answer, Don, but we appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Really do.
Well, and the next thing is, we're talking about outsourcing. I'm going, I remember that we outsourced some of our jobs. I'm in this business. When I want to make a 10% profit, I outsource it. And I outsource it to make sure I'm going to make 10% profit. Okay? Very easy and simple. Certainly, there's pros and cons to both. But outsourcing is a way to make your ends meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate your comments. Hey, anyone else? Okay, let's, let's close the public hearing, and then, and just kind of looking at council, I'm not sure that a presentation is necessary. So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not seeing anybody that's, Trace has got nothing to do with you. Actually, she did practice. I saw her practicing this afternoon. But I, I, I real, I don't personally need the presentation. I don't know, I'm not seeing that council needs it.
Shut it down. It's not a problem.
Well, just, let's see if we can get a motion.
Need to open the public hearing.
Yeah. Well, do what? Well, I'm on the, the budget. On the pre-budget.
Okay, but you don't actually take that.
We don't have, we don't have, we don't have anything tonight.
Action, no, there's no action on here.
One thing that does go along with this, though, is, and we've talked about this before, is some, some form of public education with what we come up. I mean, as the city manager comes up with a recommended budget to us, I think that does need to be rolled out so that people will have something to comment upon. I think that's part of the problem. I mean, I, I sent out an email to some people and tried to get them to, and I've got some comments back personally on it, but you've got to give people something to shoot at and talk about. And all they really know right now is, it's really bad, and, you know, what, and we're asking for comments. So, I think once we get the city manager's budget, we have some form or set something up so that we can, can get input from citizens, and hopefully get some more input.
Gene mentioned that several times. And, but I, I think you're right. I think we need to wait and see, you know. And we also, we'll need to consider, rather than the manager and his staff, at least from my standpoint, going on the road, we might need to go on the road. You know, because in, in the end, we've got to make the decision. And Randy can certainly supply us with all of the information, but he's, you know, he's just the conduit. And it may be that we need to go on the road. And if we can figure out a way that we can, I know we can't all go at the same time, but.
That's not legal.
You know, so. But anyway, I.
Publicly announce it and advertise it.
So, but I, but I think, I think you're right, Tom. I think, as, as Gene mentioned at the last meeting, the meeting before that. So, we.
I think it suffices to say what we've, we've said here is that, that revenue is flat. And that's really all that this presentation was going to say, is we're going to bring in as much this year as we did last year. So, I'd say we just dispense with it. And I'll make a motion with the presentation.
Well, actually, we can just dispense with the presentation. We don't even need, we don't need a motion or a statement. We just move on from this item. We'll see it again. You can dispense with the presentation, but you need to open up the public hearing.
We did.
I thought we did.
We did, and closed it.
I missed it. We opened it, closed it, and we're moving past this item, and we're going to move on to the fourth public hearing, which is capital improvements program for fiscal years 2011 and beyond 2015. Any comments? I know it's part of our work session, and you may just want to summarize this item, what we did in the work session, or whatever you'd like to do. I'd be glad to give it a shot.
Earlier this evening, city council held a work session with members of staff, also the superintendent and her staff, to discuss the draft 2011 to 2015 capital improvements plan. The plan also has a year six and beyond in it, so really, it provides a, a look into the future in terms of our planning as well. Total projects included in the plan were for the ci, for the city and for the schools, $31.5 million over the next five fiscal years, with an additional 22 in year six and beyond. The plan is very similar to the one recommended by the planning commission approved by the council last year. There are a few additions to it. Those additions, the most significant are, of which, are an out-year recreation center, land to begin work towards a western district park, land or allocation for sidewalks, new money for drainage, and an out-year public safety building. The plan has significant potential financial impacts, which are contained here, so that you'd see them, but is developed in a manner which is consistent with our capital improvement plan, and also, excuse me, our previous capital improvement plan and our adopted fiscal management guidelines. We could go into it at length, but I think that's probably sufficient. The superintendent would like a moment, if she could, to briefly summarize the school board's quest, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, for, any questions to Randy before we?
I think, just for public knowledge, since, you know, can you just kind of outline what's in the year one?
Yes, sir.
And not go into the out-years?
Yes, sir. As presented, there are a small handful of projects proposed for FY11. And I'll talk about the modification you made as well. But those projects as presented in FY11 for debt financing to be considered in the spring of 2011, depending upon our fiscal condition, were middle school HVAC equipment replacement, replacement of two school buses, and replacement of the buildings in the public works compound. Those three were proposed for debt funding. Additionally, we have asked you to consider monies for drainage projects, those are state monies, a, a debt-funded project that may pertain to appear. In the plan itself, it talks about $550,000 for pump station two. That has been overcome by events. The city council's actually moved forward on the financing with that. Not going to wait for next year, and money to continue our work pertaining to the consent order pertaining to the sanitary sewer system. Of those projects, the city council, at an earlier work session, gave guidance that the plan should be amended to consider a small amount of potential bond or other funding to be matched by grant funding for sidewalks in year 11. Also, the city council gave direction to staff that the money for the middle school HVAC system actually be accelerated and be a part of the follow-on action that Councilman Hunt was talking about about 10 minutes ago. So, when that is successfully concluded in about a month, we'll actually have the money available to begin that project, so we can begin pre-planning and get the work done over the summer, which is always the optimal thing to do. One other thing to tell you about FY11, there is nothing in FY11 as it was presented which has a general fund financial impact in FY11. General tax support.
Okay. You're good? Okay?
That's very good.
Okay. Jennifer? She's really milking this television time, ain't she?
Have to go get on that channel, Tom.
She's loving this.
Get her in meeting.
You've actually, Mr. Wheeler touched on it, but I just, just a reminder to the community because our portion of the CIP really here that we had last year, we moved a few things around in working with the city manager so that they would fit better with city finances. You all were wonderful when you came on tour the middle school facility this past fall, so you can see the need though. We very much appreciate you taking the time to do that. We did add the bus replacement schedule into the CIP, so I just wanted to explain to, to you again and the community that we've done that because clearly, from my earlier visit on TV, we cannot afford to put that in the operating budget now or in the foreseeable future. We do have 26 buses, 50%, of which are 16 years or older. 40% of those 26 are actually 20 years or older. And 24 of the 26 buses have 80,000, more than 80,000 miles, with six of them having more than 200,000 miles. So, I just want everyone to understand why we really do need a bus replacement schedule. And also, many of you may have noted in the media last week, Governor McDonald proposed that all school divisions would go on a 15-year bus replacement schedule. This actually puts us on a 20-year bus replacement schedule, whereas most school divisions have been operating on a 12-year bus replacement schedule. So, again, we appreciate your continued support, but I just wanted to get a little bit more specific about the addition to the CIP.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Okay, any other questions or comments? We'll open this public hearing. Okay, we will do so at this time and ask if there's any public comment regarding the capital improvements program for fiscal years 2011 and beyond 2015. Anyone at all? We will close the public hearing. We will see this one again?
Yes, sir, in the month of March.
Okay. All righty. Let's move on to new business. First item, what? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Resolution authorizing the Colonial Services Board to borrow money. And Mr. Keith German is here in event council has any questions. But Randy, I'll let you.
State code requires that, that the councils and governing bodies, or serve that limited service board, provide their consent or assent to any obligations of borrowing our credit that the CSB would enter into. We're asked to provide our consent to that as well. They're, they're looking for a $5,000 line of credit to essentially assist them with cash flow issues. We did talk with CSB to make sure that this wasn't a line of credit to help them get by structural budget issues, which it is not. I've been assured that it is not, that it is, it's cash flow stopgap. And I can, I can appreciate that. I hope never to have to come here and ask you to do something like this, but we've discussed the need to potentially do this for the city in the last six months. Very similar. And you have no obligation, moral or otherwise, to this borrowing, but your consent is required by code.
Ready?
For them to move forward.
Okay. Any questions to the manager? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the Colonial Services Board to borrow funds.
Okay. Second. Motion made second, that we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, any questions? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman. Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to item two in a new business. It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances by revising Chapter 26 pertaining to emergency management. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up item. You recently approved the new emergency operations plan for the city. This reconciles the city code. Jidat, specifically, it, it names me a city manager, or the city manager, as the director of emergency services, and then sets up a situation for who appoints deputies and things like that. It's wholly consistent with the document you approved last month.
Okay. Any questions to the manager? Someone preparing with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve an ordinance amending the code and ordinances of the city of Pecosin by revising Chapter 26, Article 2 pertaining to emergency management.
Thanks, sir. Second. All right, we have a motion made second, and we adopt that ordinance as well. Any concerns, comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item three. It's an ordinance appropriating funding for legal assistance. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this item pertains to, to what we anticipate the need to engage legal counsel as we work through the final house-raising projects that we had done previously. We, things are going in that direction with our contractor. And we anticipate the need for some, some out-of-the-ordinary legal services beyond the realm of what is, is normal. And we're simply asking you to allocate those funds so that we can pursue that to the successful conclusion. If we find ourselves going through the process of, of potentially making claim against the bond, we are eligible to recoup these costs through that process, but we need to be prepared to pay them upfront. But there's, if, if they are needed, there is a high likelihood that we can recoup them.
So, basically, I just have one question. So, basically, all you're moving, you're moving money around, it's not appropriation of money. You're moving money around within the existing budget.
That's correct.
Is this the same?
And it's to take care of a cash flow problem, potential cash flow problem, because you can't use the grant money for this.
That's correct.
Okay.
And if we are successful in recouping the money, it may be next fiscal year before we do that. Sure, we may have expenses this fiscal year.
So, this, I'll go ahead.
Are we talking about the same position that we were a couple meetings ago, where we're going to hire somebody to work the grants for housing?
No, this, this pertains to contractual issues pertaining to successful completion of, execution of the contracts for the house-raising projects that have already been done.
So, this contingency money runs through the end of June.
Yes, sir.
So, you're going to have 10,000?
200 left for March, April, May, and June?
A bit, yes, sir. Well, we began the year with 20. We augmented it by 10 that we found, that we can almost found, that became available in risk management. And so, at, at the maximum, we had 30,000 at any one time.
But then we have a deficit of 50.
At the end of the day.
You're comfortable with this.
This is still the right thing to do.
This is still the right thing to do.
We're moving money around within the budget.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Not allocating the dollars.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance transferring funds for fiscal year 2009, 2010.
All right, the motion made in second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Public hearing, so, Ms. Wiggins?
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item four, resolution making an alternate appointment to the wetlands board. Anyone have a name to submit? Marie?
I'd like to make a resolution appointing an alternate to the wetlands board in the name of Michael McCarthy, whose term would expire January 31, 2015.
Okay. All right, the motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with Michael McCarthy, his name inserted. Any questions or concerns? None? Judy, please?
Councilwoman Crawford?
I'm sorry. Did you? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, apologize. Thought I did something wrong.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, I only have two items, and I won't go to them in detail. We have talked several times during the evening about strategies for public information. I think my understanding now is, once things become clear at the state, and the superintendent and the school board complete their budget, and as we move towards and pass the submission of my budget, that we've got a public information job to do, which really doesn't start until we're in it now. But unless you have any more specific direction than that, I, I think I heard what the council had to say, and we'll do our, we'll do our level best.
All right.
And then, the other is just a simple follow-up item. Simple as an item, it's a, it's a project of several months in the workings, but I just wanted to let you know that our, that the, that the pump station two improvement projects are on track. We gave you in the weekly report sort of the long critical path, but, but it remains on track, and you will see it for a construction award at your next meeting. And if everything stays on track, which it should, and as a related note, at the last meeting, you asked that we set up a meeting with some of the same developers in the pump station two area to talk about possible opportunities for recreation space. That meeting is, I think it's next Monday, it's within the next week. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Okay. Tracy?
Just, it's a tough year coming up. We're coming off a tough year, and, and it's going to be hard, and I'd like to appeal again to the good nature of our citizens. We've always had a really strong volunteer program within the city schools, and I think that those people who might have not been in the schools recently, maybe it's time to check your calendars and see if you can start planning on helping out coming up.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Marie?
Yes, two things. First, we had a, a very good presentation in the work session from the sidewalk committee. It would have been good if, if people could have seen it on TV, but that's another subject. The, that was a, a group of about 25 citizens who, who came together over seven months, meeting once to twice a month, and came up with, I think, is a very good recommendation. It was, it was, I think, fairly well-received by everyone here on council. We really appreciate the people who've, who put in the time and have come up with a, a plan, and they, and we've discovered a, a grant program that will match 90 to 100% up to a half million dollars a year, so there might be some light at the end of the tunnel that we can start maybe building, you know, our sidewalk infrastructure segment at a time. And if we could, they had a very good report, and if that could be put on the city website so people could see it, I would, would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And also note that now this group is, it's going to go from the, you know, the sidewalk committee over to, into an advocacy group that is going to help with writing grants and help with educating the public and, and also doing some of the things that are laid out in the report. If anyone in, in the town is interested in doing that, weren't able to do it recently, please contact our city manager and let him know, because it is going to be an advisory board that, that reports to him. And I'd like to say, the citizens did a really good job, and the city staff did a great job, as always, and it was Joseph Carter who was there at every meeting and put in all those, those late nights, and, I mean, he was herding cats a lot of the time, but he did a great job of it. So, kudos to, to Joseph Carter. And the only other thing I had was if the city manager could follow up on Mr. Baker's concerns about the damage that's done to the road and how maybe we can get people to pay for damage that's done to the road, roads around town.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Carrie?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Frank?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I think we've spoken, yeah, just, I think we have. I, it was really, I think, one of the better meetings that, that I've sat in for a long time, so I thank council for that. Let me just pass on to council that Randy and I had a conference call this afternoon with members of our congressional delegation regarding NASA, and, and expressed our support there, and, you know, whatever it is that we can do as, as a city of Pecosa to make known their concerns, that we're happy to do that. Randy and I will meet in the morning with Mr. Hammond regarding community center. I have no idea what information that he will bring with him, but something more probably substantial, and we'll make sure that once that's done, that we prepare a memorandum and get it out to councils to what we, what we discussed, or I may just take the time while I'm here to give you a call. We're still working with the city of Hampton and with VDOT regarding having the, the road raised there on, on the Hampton side. I'm optimistic that November will bring us probably the funds that we need, and tried to clear that way just a little bit tonight with some of the VDOT representation here. So we're, we're moving forward, but Jean, your comment about sidewalks or some path was well-taken, and, and we'll, we'll certainly include that in our discussions. Is there anybody else we're meeting with tomorrow that council needs to know about?
No, let me check my guess.
That's all. We'll let them know what, what it is, whenever it is. But anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll let you know. And one more, just one more plea to the community, and I know we've beaten this to death, but, but we really do need your help in this budget. We need your concerns, we need your comments, because we're, we're dealing with a very explosive and volatile issue, and, and want to make sure we get all the input that we can get, sir.
Just a reminder, there is, there is one meeting that is very important tomorrow, and that's the, just about to close, that's the scheduled close session for the council members to, to meet with the persons that have expressed any...
Oh, tomorrow night.
...council vacancy. At 6 o'clock.
And we do have, by the way, we, I did give Randy a plat that was delivered to my home regarding a piece of property in the western district, and he will research that to see if that's park-suited. And I'm expecting another one by the end of the week of another piece, so, you know, hopefully that'll lead us somewhere. Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Second. All right. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
We are adjourned.